Thank you. Can we have roll call, please?
Of course. Councilmember Shaker.
Here.
Councilmember Perkins.
Here.
Councilmember Phillips.
Here.
Councilmember McCafferty.
Here.
Councilmember Armstrong.
Here.
Vice Mayor Grineau.
Here.
Mayor Miller.
Here.
And our town attorneys present.
Okay, introduction, presentations and proclamations. We have none. Call the public, please.
Call to the public is an opportunity for the public to address the council on any issue within the jurisdiction of the council that is not on the agenda. Public comment is at the discretion of the council and not required by law. Individuals are limited to speak for three minutes. Yielding of time will not be permitted. The total time for call to the public may be up to thirty minutes per meeting. Council action taken as a result of public comment will be limited to directing staff to study the matter, scheduling the matter for further consideration and decision at a later date, or responding to criticism. Disrespectful behavior will not be tolerated. This includes loud outbursts, profanity, and disruptive discussions among our audience. Mayor, I did not have any submitted cards.
Cool.
No cards. Anybody want to speak that didn't get a card in? Okay, moving on. Status reports by mayor and council regarding current events. Um, you're gonna do that one, so I won't say anything. I don't have anything. How about over here on this side, Cherry? John, no, Tom. How about over here?
No.
Hey, Mrs. Town Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers. First off, I just want to thank everyone who came out to all our first annual All-American Bash. It was a very successful, nice event. Uh, we estimate uh, about four hundred and fifty or so people came out, so it was really nice turnout for a first-time event. And I want to thank the staff who put in so much time and effort. When you're planning a first event, it really takes a lot and the team came together, so I want to thank them for that. Also, great news, we are now moving into our PD building, so we have the keys and the move is underway and they're working as hard as they can. So, we hope to be fully moved in within the next few weeks. And as a reminder, the driveway to the north is no longer open to the public. It is closed. It is emergency use only, so you'll need to use the new driveway to the south. And last but not least, I would like to congratulate one of our employees, Brandon Conley. He works in our streets division. He just earned his um, CDL, Class A CDL.
Cool.
Brandon is brand new to us. He just came to us in March, but you can see he's already working very hard to improve himself, which improves his ability to provide service to our community. So congratulations to Brandon. And that's all, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next item is consent agenda. Would anybody to my right request to remove anything? How about on my left? Then I'll uh, entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve consent agenda. Items A, B, C, D, and E.
Second. Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Alright.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Action items: Consideration Possible Action to Approve APS Solar Communities Program Rural Government Agreement. Terry.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Unfortunately, Maggie could not be here tonight, so she asked that I step in for her, so I will do that. Um, but you might remember back in January, they did a study session talking about the potential of putting solar parking out here either in the PD or in the town hall. Um, and that feedback was taken to work with APS to put this agreement that is for you on, before you on the agenda tonight. So about the program, the APS Solar Communities Program was developed to bring to life their vision of creating a sustainable energy future while serving the customers with clean renewable energy and affordable energy. Their solar program provides free solar-covered parking, structures that will be owned and maintained by APS for twenty years. And in return, APS provides a bill credit to the entity where it's provided. So we will be getting a bill credit. Um, we'll talk about that a little bit more later. For government municipal customers, the bill credit is based on the solar system size installed at the location, and the bill credit is applied every month. This is a layout of what we're looking at here. So you can see it's going to be the parking facilities here and the lots over here. So there'll be three different lines of covered parking. Um, you can see the town hall SR eighty-nine, and there's a few other things. The red hatch is the parking, the red square is where the equipment yard will be, and then the bore sites and the trenching is on the red line. And um, the bill credit that we're going to get is four hundred and thirty-seven dollars a month for having this here. The only thing, and the other thing that's important, is it will include lights on the structure, so you know you will improve some lighting for town hall in the budget. So publicly, we're just gonna wait and see those final designs, and we may need to do even less of what we mean, what we had originally planned, because we will have lights integrated and APS will be providing them. We will, if you approve this agreement this evening, we'll be back at the August twenty-second meeting, bringing the easement. They'll be asking for um, you know, utility easement to put the utilities to reach these structures. And that is it. Any questions?
Any questions to my left?
Nope. How many kilowatt hours are we looking to generate? Because four thirty-seven a month seems pretty low amount that we're gonna be getting in the rebate.
And it is, as it was, if I can go backwards, let me get here. It's based on the size of the, not necessarily the kilowatts that are generated, which I'm assuming generates the kilowatts. I don't know that number, but I can ask.
It says on the bottom of the plan.
Does it?
Three hundred and thirty-nine thousand, three hundred and seventy-six.
Thank you. Well, see, yeah, estimated, yeah, very good eyes. Thank you.
Thank you.
And so the solar panels will now fit on the covers, because I remember a few weeks ago, I thought I heard they couldn't put them on there.
So that's why we're not doing any of the police area, because we had talked about potentially putting it on there, but there were some issues with retrofitting that and uh, working with a contractor and whether that created their warranties for those things, and it just was too many things to overcome. So we decided just to stay with the currently uncovered parking spaces in town hall.
It's not a very good deal. You got anything, sir?
Nope.
How about over here? Microphone.
You had mentioned the lights, but they're only gonna give a warranty for three years. So uh, we're responsible for?
So they take the maintenance for the first three years. They will do all the maintenance and upkeep, and after that, then we will be responsible for maintenance and upkeep, but they will come back once a year and do an annual inspection of those lights.
After, after the three years?
After three years, through the twenty years. Yeah, so that's in the agreement. There's a portion later that says that they, they, we take it over after three years maintaining the lights, but they still get to do an annual inspection every year.
And I think the four hundred and thirty-seven dollars is really low.
And, and that is the bill credit. Also, remember, we are getting all the structures for free. So.
Amy?
That was important to note. Thank you.
Yeah.
Um, is this, are we including a charging station? Is that included in here?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, I think that's it. Terry, thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Will they entertain a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve that APS Solar Committees Communities Program Rural Government Agreement located on town hall property.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Alright.
Alright.
Any opposed?
No.
Just one. Motion carries. Oh, I'm sorry.
No.
No.
Two.
Okay. Two, two noes. Motion carries. Excuse me, six B. Consideration Possible Action to Approve a Professional Service Agreement with Duke's Root Control Incorporated. Frank.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Uh, the proposal before you is uh, for an INI study. Uh, so what is INI? Uh, and uh, this is for sewer. It's infiltration and inflow. So what we're seeing is uh, when we have our mons, especially monsoon rains and our big storms we have here, we're seeing a rise in the water coming into the treatment plant. So what we're looking for here is part of our ongoing maintenance of the system and looking forward to stretch those dollars to, to treat the, the plant as best we can as it grows. Uh, we're looking to study the inflow and infiltration uh, that comes into our system. So inflow is the surface water that enters the wastewater system from, from your yards and, and areas. And then infiltration is uh, where it comes in through broken pipes or separated pipes. So it's basically both of those combined is, is the clearer water that comes into the system that runs through the plant, and we have to pay to treat that, just like the, the sewage that comes in. So you try and reduce that, because sometimes too much of a good thing is a bad thing. We look for the, the influence stream coming into the plant at a certain concentration, and you can actually harm the bacteria and items that we need to process the plant by having too much clear water, um, as well as it just increases the flow um, to make that treatment. So especially with our plant, is pretty sensitive to the flows right now. Um, we're looking at, at improving that, and we'll bring that back in probably September, I think, for some of the improvements to help. But right now, we treat most of our wastewater when people are awake. So twelve hours of the day is when most of the capacity of the plant is used. So depending on when the rainfall comes, it can also add to that in our peak hours, and that's why we're trying to look at this. So uh, we'll study the system. We've got Duke's on board to put in some flow meters in manholes. Uh, we're trying to hit before monsoon season. We think we've got it right now. That's why the timing of this is so critical, is to catch those rainfalls and see where those flows increase and pinpoint the areas that we need to target for repair and replacement of our collection system. So again, this is the extra water in the wastewater plant. Leads to higher treatment costs and additional capital improvement costs. So this goes into our asset management, where we're just trying to target those areas and pinpoint those dollars to best use them. Um, so the, the actual process, what they'll do is uh, Duke's will install flow meters in the wastewater collection system. The contract calls for it to be for sixty days. If we don't get enough rainfall to do it, there's an option to go up to ninety days. And they've never had any agency they've done this for not get sufficient data within ninety days. They've only had one have to exceed sixty days. So we're pretty confident we can do this. It's an engineered report, um, and they'll provide this report in November. Um, so it'll take that long to collect data and then break down the data and provide the report, so we can include that in our capital program for, for repair and maintenance. And the timeline is in November, they should be able, we can present the report to council if desired, and uh, that'll help us plan our future dollars for repairing the system. Um, and I think that's it under four slides. So it's a, it, it seems expensive, but uh, compared to the cost of construction these days, it's, it's money well spent to target those dollars and not just randomly repair and replace sections.
Okay, start with this side.
Uh, I read that they put every other manhole, they'll put a monitor?
Uh, approximately, yeah. That's my understanding. Uh, Mike Bovee, our utility manager's been spearheading this, but yeah, it should be somewhere around every other manhole, and it's portable meters that they, they won't do them all at once, I think, but they'll, they've got plenty of them, and that's another reason for not doing it ourselves.
And so is, is that gonna be a monthly payment? So if they find where the issues are, then we're, we're done paying them, or do they get the ninety-three thousand dollars?
No, this will be a lump sum, so they'll collect the data for the sixty days, generate the report, and provide the report, and we'll pay in full when the report is complete.
Okay. Thank you. Here. Okay. Over here.
You, this report, they'd be able to pinpoint if it was coming from a specific residence?
Uh, we should get it down to the, to the manholes.
Okay.
Uh, every other manhole, so we should be within, manholes are approximately four or five hundred feet, so we should, I would estimate at least be five hundred feet plus or minus.
Do we suspect it's coming from residential property pipes or our own?
Uh, could be multiple sources. My first guess for these usually is you look at the manholes that are down in the wash areas that might go underwater. And if they've got cracks or splits in the uh, barrels of the manholes or the lids, might not be bolted down or waterproof properly. That's what you look for first. So we don't anticipate, you know, seeing some sort of uh, someone dumping their roof drains into the system here. Chino Valley's new enough. In older communities, you will see that, especially in downtown areas where you'll see roof drains tied into the sewer and items like that, but I don't expect to see that here. I think it's just some uh, broken concrete grout around some seals and seams, or maybe some disjointed pipe that's moved around over time, or a shallow pipe that might have been crushed from heavy loads or something like that.
If, if we don't do this and the system fails because of this, is there, you got an approximate cost to go to at that point, Frank?
Uh, well, our, our pipe costs these days are averaging three to three hundred and fifty dollars of a linear foot. So uh, you start adding that up, it gets up there quick. So I forget how many miles we have in town, but it's several miles.
Yeah.
So it's.
Great, thank you.
It's a penny of engineering's worth a dollar of construction sort of thing.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Sure.
Okay, uh, that's it. We'll entertain a motion.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion. We approve a professional service agreement with Duke's Root Controlling Inc. to study influence infiltration and not to exceed ninety-three thousand, nine hundred and seventy-two dollars.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
I am.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Alright, item C. Public carrying consideration and possible action to approve ordinance number two zero two three nine three three. Will.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Excuse me, Will Denji, Assistant Director here with the town of Chino Valley. The item before you for consideration is the proposed rezone for the Red Cinder Estates subdivision. The request is to rezone the two subject properties from the agricultural residential five-acre minimum zoning district to the single-family residential one-acre minimum zoning district. Uh, this item has had two neighborhood meetings, one on April twenty-sixth and the other on April twenty-seventh, and then did go before Planning and Zoning Commission on June sixth. And the applicant and property owner is in attendance this evening. So just give some context on where these subject properties are. Uh, they total roughly twenty-one acres in size and are located at the northeast corner of East Road Three North and North Road One East. They are located directly north of the Perkinsville Forty-four Development. To the west of the subject properties is the Chino Valley Mobile Home Ranch Park, the CVP Marijuana Cultivation Site, and then to the north of the subject properties is the Arizona Horse Connections, Inc. So the subject properties currently zoned AR five. The request is to go down to SR one. To the north of the subject properties is a mix of AR five and SR one, similar to the east. To the south is a hundred and key, a hundred and sixty-two lots that make up Perkinsville Forty-four of the SR zero point one six to seven thousand square foot lots. To the west is a mix of single-family residential one acre again, as well as commercial light. The twenty-fourteen general plan land use map does designate the subject properties as well as the areas to the north, east, and south as the medium-density residential two acres or less. And then to the west of this property is the commercial multifamily core. The requested zoning district of SR one is in conformance with twenty-fourteen plan. To date, staff has received two letters of opposition for this project. There will be found, or they are found within your agenda packet. Attached to this rezoning are nine stipulations. One through seven came from staff, eight and nine came from the Planning Commission on the June sixth meeting. Now, the applicant is in agreement with one through nine and would like to bring number, or excuse me, one through eight, and would like to bring number nine um, up for discussion this evening. They would like to um, ask for an extension or an increase on that five-year time limit. Um, they are here again this evening if council would like to entertain that discussion. With that, the Planning and Zoning Commission forwarded to town council a recommendation of approval for the rezone for agriculture residential five acre minimum to single-family residential one acre minimum for the Red Cinder Estates rezone with the conditions found in attachment A. I'll go ahead and open up for any questions or discussion.
Can you go back to the, thank you.
Absolutely.
If you would. We'll start off on my left here. Cherry, John.
Couple of questions, Will, but actually, I would reference number eight, yeah, because I was hoping Frank would provide some information that I sent in advance. I requested. You want to go forward?
I apologize if I didn't get the communication, but I'll see what I can do. So.
Well, is there any possibility we can get into showing the plot? The preliminary plot, the conceptual design?
Yeah, we can show the conceptual design. This is purely conceptual. Um, and if approved tonight, uh, that this will come before council.
So.
So this is one of the concepts.
During the planning and zoning meeting, because I did listen to it via online later, there was a relating to topic numbers eight on the things would go into town discussion about sewer and water, but it just denotes sewer, it's our water. My question is, how close is this, this project to the sewer line? What's the closest sewer line to this project as it's being proposed?
Can I say it depends?
You can, but I still need to be.
Thank you, councilmember. Uh, the existing sewer, the existing closest sewer to this physically is either in Perkinsville Road or through the uh, partially developed subdivision of Perkinsville Forty-four. And those distances vary, and one of the complications is the way the water flows through here. The, that's uphill from the subdivision. So some of the options to get physically to get sewer in here might include a lift station potentially.
Okay, so I guess in a nutshell, as it's been, as I understand this project, as it's been proposed, it's gonna be sewer, it's gonna be seventeen wells and septic.
Uh, that's currently what's being proposed.
My question is, to make it to, to where we get this project on municipal sewer and water, what does the town need to do to get them within the distance to require hookup to sewer and water?
Okay, for sewer, you would have to look at, again, how it would connect. So you'd need to perform a, maybe a cost-benefit analysis of the, the possible sewer connections. Uh, we looked at it. If you, if you can find a legal way into the Perkinsville Forty-four subdivision and tap into that sewer, you'd need to analyze the capacity to make sure those lines are big enough. The good news is seventeen lots is not that many household connections when you're talking about a sewer main.
Okay.
So optimistic there. The bad news is the closest physical connection point is only five feet deep. Um.
So a lift might be necessary.
Yeah, and to, and if we couldn't get an easement through there, you may have to pump it down Road One East about a quarter mile to Perkinsville Road, then enter into the sewer there. And a lift station would probably be a quarter million dollars or more just for the lift station alone. And then the pipe would be at a quarter mile. Uh, I'd have the three hundred times twelve hundred, whatever that would be.
A lift for, I mean, are we talking a thirty-six inch, a lift for thirty-six inch main?
Not, no, it would probably be smaller than eight inches. You might do a four inch.
It would be a quarter million dollars for that size of a lift?
For the lift station, you have, uh, you'd screen it, put a pump on it.
Costs a lot. It just seems more than double what I was expecting or what I've heard. That's why I'm saying.
Yeah, I would, that's the round number I use for a municipal lift station with some sort of screening facility in it. Um, you'd have, build a structure for it. Um, lift it.
So is there a main, a sewer main on Adams on One East, right down the center? Does it go to there?
Um, and help me, Will, Adams is the new street?
No.
Oh, Adams on One East. No, the, the sewer main is down at Perkinsville and One East.
Okay, Perkinsville. So it's a little further.
Because we didn't extend sewer north on One East, because that's uh, downhill. So the, the, the road goes, it's, it's pretty flat, but the road goes this direction and the sewer would go this direction. So you run out of uh, space.
So you're basically telling me that the town would never be able, this is not, it's not a viable option. What I'm hearing you're saying is, don't think about doing this.
Well, I'd love to, sewer would be great.
Could then less, how do we find a way to make it work?
You'd just have to see if it pencils economically to justify the seventeen lots. That would be a business decision, and I would have to throw numbers at that to see, but um, that's part of the issue. The reason I didn't recommend it at planning and zoning is because town code calls for, if sewer is within three hundred feet, then they have to expand the sewer, but we're further than three hundred feet in this case.
And then the last question I have is just based on this conceptual design. I understand this. Are you good with the roads, two dead end roads, or would you want them to be a connector if this is the, I know this is conceptual, but?
Yeah, there's some other preferences, and we would work with the developer on that in technical review. One of the options discussed at planning and zoning was maybe developing a portion of the Three North right away. There's, we might need to acquire some additional right away in there. Some of it's narrower than fifty feet.
Okay.
But that might be a good option to maybe have some sort of entrance at some point going in and creating a loop road and having an entrance either to the Three North alignment or to One East and not have those two cul-de-sacs. We'd also look at the alignment of those cul-de-sacs to make sure they're far enough apart. And we'd also look at the, across the street, you don't want to have it going into anyone's bedroom. There were some neighborhood concerns about that, about where those streets would come out in relation to people's houses. So we'd want to be sensitive to that as well, and we'd work with the developer on that.
Okay.
But there's three options as far as traffic. You come out into Red Cinder, One East, or construct a portion of Three North. And so that, that's why I try to say this is only a conceptual level. We'd work with the developer to see what makes sense for everybody.
Well, you got, you got two single ingress egress with the way this conceptual drawing is up here. So there's no connection between the two, so if you got a problem or a fire or anything else, you're looking at the same problem with single in, egress and ingress. And he's poking seventeen more holes in the ground, which I'm sure came up at the neighborhood meeting that they didn't want seventeen more holes pushed in the ground. Sounds like he gives these to get together with Perkinsville Forty-four, and they come out with some kind of a deal that'll get sewer and water to both of them, because we can't afford to do Road Three. And I don't think you're gonna talk to a developer in doing Road Three extension, unless it's just to make another ingress egress.
Right.
And then it's gonna be from both of them or just from one of them.
So it would be from, from this developer. We'd look at what, try and do what's proportional to the development.
You're creating another single ingress egress.
Right, and yeah, that's a concern. We always shoot for two code calls for over thirty lots that you're required to have two. Um, and I can address the water. Water's got another wrinkle to it if you want me to address that.
Sure.
Uh, just let you know, that could get expensive going on town water. Wasn't brought up at planning and zoning, but discussing it with, with Mark, our water resources consultant. Right now, the way state code, state statute is under twenty lots, they're not required to bring the paper water for the certificate. Um, unless they go on municipal water. So if we put them on municipal water, that brings in all the other credits. So with the water budget for the slots, we're talking about one point two five million dollars worth of water credits.
Okay.
In addition to any pipe you put in the ground, if you're on town water.
Cost of doing business has gone up.
So.
That's all I got.
Oh.
I'm concerned about the traffic. All coming out on uh, One East. It's not a good road to begin with. And you don't have, uh, you're talking about extending Three North. Who pays for that? You can't go out on Red Cinder. The road's not big enough for that. And where they had it, it goes in the, right into one guy's driveway. That was in P and Z.
Right. So we, from town staff perspective, any of, of those scenarios, we would look for uh improvements from the developer to make those scenarios work, depending on which one's chosen.
Improvements from the developer.
Correct. Development would pay for development.
Frank question, you said the easements weren't fifty feet?
Correct. If you see this uh property on the southwest side here, that's the, the crosshatch property is the Perkinsville forty-four development.
Yeah.
So we've got a plat for that. Uh, where my cursor is right now is where the sewer is currently built to. So the north half of that subdivision's not platted yet. And we have conceptual plans, but, but nothing's been platted or approved for the north half of the subdivision as far as construction. But this lot to the left, it's AR five here. Uh, the right away in three north is only twenty-five feet wide through there. So there'd have to be discussions with the property owner to see if they'd want to donate or some process. Maybe through legal to get that right away fifty feet so that we could have a local road and, and the right away does not go past the Perkinsville forty-four. If you look that cross hatch area on the right, there is no right away on three north for that next lot that's already been developed. Um, so it kind of dead ends. That's why three north will never really be a, a through street. It's too hard to get all the right away through there. And you'd also have to have a big crossing at the Santa Cruz Wash. And you might as well just use Perkinsville at that point.
And it said A dot still needed to do traffic studies on this location.
Not A dot. The developer would provide the traffic studies and the impacts onto one east. Uh, as part of the development.
Shouldn't they do that before they brought it up to us?
Well, are you asking my opinion on the impacts of the one acre lots is I, I don't think it'll be from a traffic perspective, a significant impact considering the, the neighboring development through there.
It's thirty-two plus cars there.
Right. And a, a single family home is about ten trips per day is what we plan on. So it's seventeen lots. You're looking at a hundred and seventy extra trips per day in that area. And so.
That's what's going to come out of Perkinsville forty-four.
Correct. Hmm. Yeah. Perkinsville forty-four by contrast is a hundred and sixty-two lot. So it's a
Hundred car.
It's a higher level of traffic coming out on the Perkinsville and one east.
And do I not see the hundred year water assurance plan here anywhere yet?
No.
You don't need it. They don't need it?
No, for the
They're doing wells. No.
That would be for their certificate of assured water supply. Uh, that's, they would, uh, Mark, correct me if I'm wrong, but they would need to physical availability determination. But not the, um, as I talked about the water credits, the, the paper water. Uh, because it's less than twenty lots.
Does the physical availability of that water?
The responsibility of developer to provide that to the state.
Come in and do it. Okay.
No. I have a question. I don't know if you can answer it or not, but you said that cross hacks, that cross hatch section directly south of this subdivision is part of the Perkinsville forty-four.
Correct.
So Perkinsville forty-four is going to take water and sewer up
Correct.
To the border. I don't understand. Is there not any way that we can get hooked up with them and us and everybody to get water and sewer over there? Excuse me. I'm sorry. Yeah.
Right. That's, that would, that's, maybe I was unclear in how I described it. That would have to be worked out right now, the way it's platted. There's no legal access through there. So that would have to be something looked at. That's
I'm sorry.
Oh, I was just going to say that's the connection point in the top right of that corner. Um, there's a, in the future, street is about five feet deep. So we'd have to see if that would work.
No, I understand. Probably a lift station. Alright, that's understandable.
But if
And then, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. If it worked, as long as you had a drainage easement through the lots or there's also a detention basin in that top right corner.
Um, and the second thing I was going to mention is, is it not possible at the end of those cul-de-sacs to the east to put emergency exits? What game?
Exit.
Exits there? To, cause that's a driveway that comes off a red cinder that runs in front of all those places.
I would have to explore if that's a legal easement or not.
I don't know.
So we, we could look into that.
Just another thought. I, I personally am in favor of doing whatever we have to do to work with people to get water and sewer to these subdivision.
Correct.
I think that water recovery, especially on the sewer side is more important than the water. Cause if you're putting in twelve wells or you're pumping twelve wells worth of water in a, through a pipeline from the plant, the water plant, it's the same usage. But getting that sewer water back is super important, in my opinion. And that was my little soapbox. I'm done.
Can, can I make, I'm just curious. Obviously the town might have some work to do to maybe negotiate to see if there's room for negotiation with the Perkins forty-four project people and all that. So in order to not shut this project down, if that's where it might end up, what about we continue this agenda item to the late August uh agenda, which will allow town staff and the developer and whoever else needs to be part of that discussion to work those, these things out. And then that way we can make a decision. Cause if we vote it down, let's just say hypothetically gets voted down, they got to wait a whole other year to pursue it. And that might not be right when it's possible that the staff could facilitate a meaningful process for us or a resolution.
You could send it, send it back to P and Z and staff and let them work out the potential of everything that we've discussed and then bring it back when we have all the information instead of somebody punching seventeen holes in the ground and wondering where it goes.
Okay. That's not my decision. That's our decision. So.
I also feel that there's a lot of what ifs here. And I don't want to vote on what ifs.
Um, does anybody have any questions for the applicant?
Is the applicant?
That's what they said. He's here.
Yeah, they said he's here.
I would like to ask him one.
Okay. Here he comes. Here they come. Go ahead. Good evening, sir.
Now can I answer any questions for you?
Could you please state your name?
It's Alan Nell.
Alan Nell. Okay.
Mr. Nell, good evening. I, I like the project. I like the concept of it, but I, do you understand what we're trying to achieve with the line of questioning we, you've heard tonight?
Yes.
Okay.
And a lot of those issues could be addressed with staff. Again, this is conceptual.
Right.
And we understand some of the concerns as to secondary exiting on the south or the north side. Uh, the idea of water, whether it comes through the city system or through the wells, it's the same water. Uh, the issue on the sewer is the distance of the sewer line. And whether or not we can even get access in to the sewer on that project to the south, the forty-four. And I'm not sure that's even possible with the fact that that project has come to a screeching halt.
Right. Agreed. But I, we, I don't, I want to make every avenue, I personally, I can't speak for everybody up here, but I want to see that we exhaust all avenues possible to achieve the, at least getting the sewer for the recharge, because that's part of our long-term sustainable water process. Okay. So you understand if we can, if, if it's decided, we continue it. It's a positive in your direction because we're trying to make it work for you instead of the alternative where you, let's say potentially it gets shut down. And then you got to wait a whole year to re, reapply.
Understood. And maybe to address the water, the sewer, uh, Jim Holt could address that more uh in more detail. But it might be possible to approve the project, but put the conditions or the, the concerns you have for us to work out with staff, then we can move forward on those concerns.
Anything else for him? Good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, any questions for the water guy?
No. No.
Don't look like it. Thank you. Okay. We're gonna, now, uh, I'm going to declare the public hearing open for.
We did have a couple speaker comment cards. First is Diane Norberg.
Good evening, Diane.
I'm a bit nervous. Please don't start the clock. I've been rehearsing it at home.
Already running.
Down so that I would not ramble and it's three minutes at home, but I'm a bit nervous. So please bear with me for just, you know, thirty seconds extra.
We're nervous.
Oh, thank you. I feel better. Um, first I would like to thank the council for their time and for hearing my comments. As I shared at the very uncaring planning and zoning commission, my husband and I moved to Chino Valley and specifically to this neighborhood last year when we retired here. It was a huge undertaking selling our house. We looked at many other nearby cities such as Prescott, Cottonwood and several others. But we loved the small town country atmosphere of Chino Valley. It's uncrowded, wide open spaces, variety of livestock and the large lots and beautiful views. This neighborhood was our perfect retirement dream. Just like many other citizens here, we value our uncrowded, wide open space that surrounds us. Like many of our neighbors, we have to drive past the corner of road one, coming out of red cinder every single day. There is no other way to get in or out of our neighborhood. So whatever goes in there will affect us. We didn't know about the Perkinsville forty-four track homes until after we bought our house. Needless to say, we were very disappointed. This new development will be right next to Perkinsville. There is no need for seventeen more homes, not so close. If you allow these five acre lots to be rezoned to one acre lots, it does not benefit the current neighbors in any way. It only benefits the developer more money in his pockets by doing one acre. I would hope you care more about the current neighbors than the developers profit. Fifteen or more homes would add to the pollution and overcrowding of vehicles on road one, which is already unsafe. The current residents, the ones who elected you to listen to their wishes like the open rural country feeling and views that exist now. They enjoy the large lots that can handle livestock. Many people tell the local Chino Valley realtors that they are looking for two to five acre lots to raise horses and other livestock on. In fact, the house right next to me is for sale right now. The people that we have visited with there say they are specifically looking for a two acre or bigger lot so that they can bring their horses. They live in Prescott now. They are natives, but they want out. I understand there's going to be growth in our little town, but I hope you would consider not making such a large reduction. A good compromise would be keeping the lots at two or more acres each. That would maintain some of the wide open feeling that we enjoy now. One acre lots would not benefit. Can I do one last sentence?
What's that?
Can I do one last sentence?
One last sentence, quick.
I would, I'm also asking that you would not allow two story homes there. They would block some of the views. Single story homes, if we could make that a um restriction, I would appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next I have Rachel for now.
Good evening, council. Um, I attended both the neighborhood meeting and planning and zoning on this particular topic. We had been dealing with Adam Haywood as a representative of this project up until today. And um, he seemed when the neighbors and myself brought our concerns about the ingress egress, possibly using the three north easement. And also um, the lot size, lift station, all the concerns you've talked about this evening. Um, he seemed like Mr. Nell as Mr. Nell's representative, that he would be very open to some of these options. Um, I think projects like these are speaking to a bigger issue that we're seeing and some of you addressed it. And that's really what's flawed in our town code. So Frank said for thirty lots, that requires two points of ingress and egress, but this is not thirty lots. So I'm confused. I'm also confused as to why in our town code, we require things like ingress and egress. But we don't have more stringent requirements for sewer and water. Um, I'm not saying anything that you guys don't know, but the simple fact is, is if we don't get more people onto sewer, our town is going to continue to lose money. That's the only place in the last fiscal budget that we lost money was with our water treatment plant. So I would like to encourage council members. I think it only requires two of you to request of staff to rewrite this portion of the U D O. It's going to be pertinent to the new general plan. I think it's so, so important. Um, and I don't think it should just be five or six hundred feet. I think it should be a quarter mile. And quite frankly, that's the cost of doing business and we need to bring reputable developers into our community who are going to pay their fair share. And it's going to benefit us as a whole to have that infrastructure in place for our future. That's all I have to say. I still think it's a great project. I like that it's single family homes. I don't mind the one acre parcels. I actually think that they should reach out to brown homes because they're probably desperate for a little money right now. Maybe they can uh buy a portion of that land for an easement to extend the sewer. That's all.
Thank you. Do any others?
Those are the only ones I had submitted, mayor.
Okay, we're going to close the public hearing. Oh, I'm sorry. Didn't see you.
Yep.
You know, matters. I own that lot. Oops. That was one of them. Losing it. That one out there.
Yeah, right there.
Yep. Yeah, they're paying her to put that there.
You lost it. That lot right there. I own that lot right to the south. And I do have a twenty-five foot easement on my north border for three north. So it would give him fifty foot for a road through there. That's all I have to say.
Okay. Thank you. What's the council's pleasure?
On the motion part?
Yeah, close over there.
Can I, be a close?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'll close public hearing again. Thank you. What's council pleasures now with the motion?
Would, would the council be interested in pursuing a continuance of this until the um, what is it? August twenty-second, August twenty, at least the August twenty-second. It has to be. Okay. August twenty-second. But I mean, before we make a formal motion, is there kind of a consensus that people want to pursue that?
I would be for that.
I'd like to see staff and P and Z get back together with the developer and go through it before it comes back to us.
I'll make a motion that we continue this agenda item. What, what is it?
Two zero two three dash nine three three.
Two zero two three dash nine
Three three.
Nine three three to the August twenty-second agenda item with uh specific directions as given by the town manager to our staff.
Oh, motion made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries. All right. Item D, public hearing consideration, possible action regarding resolution number twenty twenty-three, twelve thirty-two and resolution number twenty twenty-three, twelve thirty-three.
Good evening, mayor and council. Lori Linehan, Development Services Director. Tonight we're holding a public hearing for the formation of a maintenance improvement district. This is very similar to the street light improvement districts that you guys have just gone through the process of, which is called a slid. Only this is for looking at the maintenance of all the drainage facilities, the basins and the landscaping in three subdivisions that are adjacent to each other. So here is the, on the, on the screen. We've in outlined in red are the three subdivisions. It's south of Perkinsville. This is uh Salida del Sol. You can see it probably better here without the aerial in the background. This shows the three subdivisions, the areas that will be maintained with this maintenance improvement district. What happens is the first year the developer pays for that maintenance. That gives us an opportunity to understand the cost, the potential cost associated with that. We come up with an estimate, just like we do with the slid for Bright Star. And then that comes before you during our budgeting process. This is in place of an HOA. So instead of us um hoping that property owners will write a check each month to the HOA for maintenance. This would come out of their property taxes. It only, the amount is only the amount. That it costs to do the maintenance for their subdivisions. So I just wanted to share that information with you and um, the developer is here tonight. If you have questions for him.
Okay. Questions for staff?
I have questions for you. So what is the cost to the administration? Town administration to. Do this every year to send it in for the tax things?
Or um, we had discussions with the um. The finance director and he felt that it was so miniscule that it wouldn't be worth us even charging. Because it's seventeen lots.
It's, it's.
We could charge, we are, we are able uh according to statute to charge up to twenty percent.
I've got here thirty-two lots.
Uh, twenty-five.
But then it's not seventeen lots.
I'm sorry. Seventeen is his project. Sorry. Yeah, twenty-five lots.
I have the addresses here. It's thirty-two lot.
Count of.
Well, I'm looking at the map and it looks like twenty-five to me. Uh, unless we're counting the tracks. Including track GF. Okay, so tracks are different than lots. The tracks are the ones that are getting the maintenance on them. The lots are the ones that are paying for the maintenance on the tracks.
Okay, then um. Who performs the maintenance?
The first year the developer does that. Uh, the second year, we would be hiring someone based on the cost. Of the maintenance the prior year.
So you would have to find somebody that would do it for that cost.
They would do it, and if it costs more, then the following year we would increase that amount.
Okay, how often will they be going in there and doing maintenance?
I have no clue.
So how do you come up with?
I would say at least once a month. I mean. This is the first one time we've done a maintenance improvement district for these types of facilities, so this is going to be a test for us this year and see how that goes. We'll be working with the developer. We'll be checking with him. We'll be checking out there. And if it looks like it needs maintenance more frequently, we'll be talking to him and asking him to provide that maintenance. And then that gives us a clue for the next year how we may, how we uh set that costing up.
I'm not happy with miniscule cost on administration. I think that we should charge. A price. For the town people doing this. If we're taking over what an HOA should be doing. Then we should be recouping something. Miniscule cost.
Mayor, council, if I may, so I, and that is something that we can do. We can incorporate into it. I think we're allowed to charge a two percent. Is it two percent? Between two and three percent. We'd have to look what the, the law is, but we are allowed to try, charge administrative fee. And also when we bid out the maintenance, we'll have a contractor come in and give us an estimate what. What they say it's going to cost to do it, and that's what they'll be. They'll be held to under contract, so we'll know what the estimated cost is.
And then you'll be telling them how many times you want to do it that year?
Right, we'll get their professional opinion of what it takes to maintain that type of property. To keep it in, in, up to our standards, and we'll have them bid on that type of work.
I understand when it rains, you have, you have to do it more. Okay, I just don't want the town to have to pay anything.
Correct, and that's why we're putting this maintenance district into place so that. The homeowners that are benefiting benefiting from this are the ones that are paying for it, not the whole town, but just the homeowners that are benefiting from this.
Okay. Thank you, Lord.
Amy, you got anything? Eric? I don't. Sure.
Well, nope, nope.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, is there any questions for the applicant? Nope, no, 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 all right.
Lori was the applicant.
Then we'll open the public hearing on this topic.
Mayor, I did not have any cards submitted.
Okay, no comments on this? All right, we're gonna close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Make a motion or approve resolutions two zero two three dash one two three two and resolutions. Two zero two three dash one two three three.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Sherry?
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Okay.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're adjourned. Thank you.
Great, my calendar says no more announcements again.
Aaron? They didn't get you this microphone.